Good evening. I hereby call the Athletics, Arts, Music, Extracurricular Activities Subcommittee Meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, and the time is 6:03. Before we conduct this meeting, I'd like to get a quorum. Cynthia Mendez?
Here.
Catherine Atlas?
Here.
Jared Homer?
Here.
Tony Rodriguez here. Superintendent Mike Thomas is not available today. He is at Harvard with his daughter. They got accepted into a summer program, so they have orientation today. So congratulations to her. The purpose of this Subcommittee is to ensure school sports, arts, music, and extracurricular activities are educational and contribute to the overall education of all students. The Committee will be committed to advancing Brockton Public Schools' mission and equity and excellence through athletics, arts, music, and extracurricular activity programs, promoting cultural diversity and community engagement. The Committee will see that all levels of school-grade children are afforded the opportunity to have athletics, arts, music, and extracurricular activities available year-round and see where we can grow in areas throughout the school district. The Committee will also work and engage with the Athletic Director K-12, Director of Art K-12, Director of Music K-12, Physical Education K-12, and Middle School Sports, Director of Communities Schools and After-School Programs, and Coordinator of Recreation Programs for the Community Schools to support and get updates on all the programs. Today's agenda, we will get an overview of athletics programs K-12, the arts programs K-12, music K-12, and an overview of the extracurricular activities. In attendance, we have Kevin Cabro, the Athletic Director for the High School, Matt Campbell, Nick Lee, Sarah Richards, and Michael Smith with the Music Department. We'll start off with the athletic program. Kevin, the floor is all yours. If you can give us an overview. I don't know if you want to, if we have another mic, but if you want to just take the podium and just give us an overview.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here. Brockton High School Athletics, we have three seasons between the fall, the winter, and the spring. And just this past year for 2020-21, the total number of students that actually participated in our programs was 997. We have 17 sports offered at the high school, and out of that, there are 27 sports teams between boys and girls at the varsity, the JV, and the freshman level. And with that, we have 60 coaches that are part of that program. The numbers in the past, I mean, this year is actually pretty consistent with what we've had pre-COVID as far as participation rates go. The one thing that we do struggle with in some of the areas is with our women's programs, just getting the number of girls involved. And that's something that I know that we are working with, with Matt and with Nick, to try to give more opportunities for our girls when they come up here to be successful and to get involved in athletics, because I think that all would agree that sports teaches things that you can't learn in a classroom, and I just think it's a very important part of what we do here. And, you know, moving forward, we have plans in place with partnering with Tom Brady's foundation and organization. We have hired one of their strength coaches to come down here three days a week to work with our athletes who are in-season. And this is the second cycle that we've done this, and they're also working with our football teams. And it is our hope that over the summer months, we will continue that partnership with them to utilize our facilities, our new weight room, and just to get more kids living a healthy and active lifestyle and getting them ready for their upcoming seasons. Are there any questions that you have specifically for me? I'd be more than happy to answer.
I'll open the floor up to the committee members if anybody has any questions for Kevin regarding athletics. Kathy?
Thank you very much. Just a quick question. Why do you think there's such a challenge with girls in terms of sports? Do you have any theories, hypotheses? I'm just curious.
Well, it's just not here in Brockton. I mean, it's a lot of the other schools in our league, which are Bridgewater, Rainham, and Dartmouth, and Durfee, and New Bedford, they're struggling with their numbers too. And it's just not something that's isolated here to Brockton. I think it's just something in general across the state. I think participation numbers for female sports isn't what it was. We haven't had a women's soccer team, freshman team, for three years. We just can't get the girls to come up here and commit. So I'm hoping that with tomorrow night's open house, middle school open house, we can just tell the parents and the kids, these are the dates that tryouts are, what you need to be eligible, how to register on Family ID. We are trying our best to promote all the good things that we have to offer up here. So we'll just keep plugging away, and hopefully we'll get more kids interested.
Do you think, I guess I'm just curious, if they're not participating in sports, have we seen a lift somewhere else? Is there another, are there other programs that we see them shifting to? I'm just...
Well, I think one of the things that we compete with and I struggle with is AAU. And it's the club teams that a lot of these kids, they prefer to play. And I think parents have a misconception that AAU is the, and it's, hey, I'm not taking anything away from kids playing, but I think parents have so much money invested in registrations and coaches and things of that nature that when it comes to pick between their club team that they're paying a good amount of money for coming to the high school, the club usually wins.
Yeah, I can totally understand.
And that's not always the case, but I mean, we've seen it, we've seen a trend, especially with soccer.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you for sharing. Well, similar to Kathy's question, I guess my number-one question, because you mentioned how it's a goal that you are going to work towards, but also how other districts you've noticed have had the same issue of low numbers when it comes to women-girls participation. I wonder, you did say that there's going to be an open house tomorrow, so there's going to be access of information to parents. So the number-one question I had, what sports are being offered in the middle school level? The other question I have, are there role models? Like, so a lot of times, girls, if they don't see themselves, right, in the fields or in the courts, who, are there any way to have like a mentor role model program to promote girls or women athletes?
Okay. So to go back to your first question about what sports are offered in middle school, and I'll defer to Nick on this, but I'm pretty sure it's men's and women's cross-country in the fall. There's football that has just started this past year in the fall, boys and girls soccer. In the wintertime, there's basketball, and in the springtime, there is coed volleyball. Is that, and we do track.
Kind of two winter seasons. We do basketball, then we do volleyball kind of in between spring and winter.
And as far as the, and as far as a mentorship, that's a great, that's a great idea and a great starting point that we have to really kind of take a look at, and I think it would make sense to have some of our girls here, go back down to the middle school and work with those girls and just kind of expose them to what goes on up here and to be that role model. And I think that's great. Where you give back, and a lot of kids would love to go back to their school where they came from, and that's something we can certainly take a look at.
Yeah. And then just because, what was, what was his name?
Nick?
Yeah, Nick.
Come on, you could take the podium, because this is being recorded.
The reason why I wonder about that coed is very like, and I'm speaking from a, as a woman perspective, a woman athlete, because I did, I did play throughout middle school and high school. I think that could be very intimidating. Like, I played with boys when I had a relationship with those boys, but as we know, physicality-wise, that could be a huge difference and a huge challenge for girls that may not the sport, may not have the foundational skills. So I wonder, does that have an impact if they're not participating in the middle school level? But that's for Nick.
And this is, I know that when I worked in the middle schools, I thought that volleyball, the coed volleyball, worked the best because there was a boys' team, there was a girls' team, and at the very last match, there were three boys and three girls on the court, and that was the coed piece of it. They practiced together. They didn't necessarily play unless that final match came down. So it wasn't a true, true coed sense in that they played every game and match together. It was, I thought it was a perfect blend to just get everybody to work on their skills together. And the other thing that I wanted to add, Tony, is pre-COVID and everyone else, one of the things that I did is I would go down to the middle schools right before the end of the school year with a PowerPoint presentation, and we met with all of the eighth graders in the cafeteria, auditorium, wherever it would be, and we gave them an overview of what we offer up here. We gave, we showed pictures, we gave them registration dates, we gave them dates that we were going to do physicals. So we tried to get the information out, and we had pamphlets that we handed out. And I know Matt does something similar with trying to recruit kids to play football. So we, I think we do a very good job promoting the athletics up here. We just have to have more kids just take a chance and get involved and get out of their comfort zone.
Could you just give, just a quick refresher on like athletic fees for the high school or for middle school fees?
We don't have any. And that's one of those things that's very unique to Brockton. I mean, we, and we've been very fortunate that we have funding to not require use of fees. We provide equipment, we provide uniforms, we give them everything that they need. And, you know, I've been very fortunate and blessed to have a budget that's, that's non-restrictive in that sense. And so we try our best to give everybody what they need.
Any other questions? Well, I have a few questions. Can you touch base on our hockey program? I know through the years, they've lost a great amount of them. I know we do, it's like a co-op with another town. So if you just want to touch base on that and, you know, what the struggle is with that program.
I just think hockey in urban areas is, it's very difficult, and it's expensive, and it's a very expensive sport. I know that New Bedford has dropped their hockey program. Durfee does a co-op with three other schools because of the lack of interest. And this past year, we had four kids on our ice hockey team from Brockton. There's not a lot of youth players coming from Brockton, and a lot of times, what we've seen is if they are talented, they end up going to private school. And I think that's where you would lose your, your better hockey players that come through here, is they will opt to go to B.C. High, Zerbarian, C.M., Thera Academy. I know it's being, they're coming after our kids, so that's something that we struggle with.
Is there any, any program in place where, you know, we're recruiting ourselves at the younger level with these other programs to the kids in the city? I mean, if we know that we have a group of students and athletes in the city that are going elsewhere, like, what are we doing far as trying to keep them in-house to grow that program?
Well, I know that the coach, prior to the co-op, he would have contact with all of the youth coaches. He would meet with the kids, he would go to their practices, he would get to know the kids before they came up here to build the relationships with those kids and their families and just try to encourage them to come to Brockton High School. And, but that's, it's just changed. I mean, there's just not a lot of kids playing youth hockey in Brockton. There's just not.
How, how does the coaching, like, take place with that when you have two schools? Like, who's that, who gets the opportunity to be the head coach that's doing that when you have two schools?
Well, you have to apply to the MIAA to do the co-op, and whoever has the most, who has the greater number of kids in the program, they become the host school. And at the time, we applied for the co-op. That was Stoughton. So Stoughton had a head coach, but we do get to hire an assistant coach. So Dave Brophy is the assistant, and he's here at the high school, and he can check in with the kids, and they work very well together. I have to say, the co-op has worked remarkably well. I know we'd like to have more kids involved, but the team made the tournament this year. Parent support has been fantastic, and we'll see what the numbers look like for next year. I think we may have three or four kids on the, on the roster.
Now, what's your, your main struggles, you know, 27 teams? And I look at facilities. What's your struggles? Do you have a struggle with scheduling? Knowing that you only have one turf field? I mean, you have, you know, freshman boys and girls soccer going on, then you have freshman JV varsity football. Do we have ample space here at the high school to accommodate that also with scheduling games?
When Mother Nature cooperates and it doesn't rain, yeah, we, we make things work. In a perfect world, two artificial surface fields out back behind the skating rink, a polisino field, would, would solve a lot of the problems we have, just not only for practices, but for games and for the youth soccer that wants to use the stadium. That's been on my wish list since I've been here, just to get two, actually, we could do two and a half fields out back. We have the space for it, so you would have practice field and two game fields, and you wouldn't be at the mercy of Mother Nature.
So, so basically, what we need here is two more turf fields. Do you think that's suitable, or do we need more? I'm looking at it like when you're, when you're running, you have the, we'll get with soccer. You have all three levels with the girls, then you have all three levels with the boys. So that's like, to me, I'm looking at six fields. Then you have football.
Then you have field hockey, you have freshman football. I mean, if we could turf every athletic surface here at the high school, it would be amazing. I mean, if we did the one up by Belmont Street with a softball field in, as a JV soccer, and the girls' practice in the two out back, this would take a very good campus and facility to a level that would rival any private school in the area.
Have you, you know, looked, you know, put a plan into place or any renderings? You know, where is that? I mean...
Yes. Well, I shared back in, back last spring, I had one of the turf management companies over in Rockland, R A D. They've done a lot of work in, in the surrounding towns, and I want to say that they did Marzano Stadium back 10 years ago when they put the turf down. They came out and they gave us a rendering. I have the rendering for all the lighting back there. They identified all the wetlands and what needs to be flagged and all the abutters, so we have a pretty good plan and a rendering in place. And what they're able to do out back would be just fantastic.
Does that include locker rooms or just fields?
I would, I mean, once again, in a perfect world, I would love to have two sets of locker rooms, a team meeting room, concession stand, restroom. So just not only for us, I mean, I don't, I'm not being selfish in saying this is just for Brockton High, but just for the community and just how many groups and organizations want to come in and use Marzano Stadium. And there's only one stadium, and a lot of groups want to come in. And I just think this would, you know, save the wear and tear out there, and would also showcase what we have. I mean, this is a great location. The MIAA always wants to use it because it's easy off, easy off of 24. There's plenty of parking. So I would love to see something like that happen before I retire.
Joyce, would we, I know, I just want to acknowledge that Joyce is in the audience, our vice chair. Quick question. With the facilities, would we be able to refer that to the facilities Subcommittee? Would we have to take a vote on that, just to be clear, or just refer it during regular school committee meeting? All right, thank you. On the coaching, you know, is there any assessment, you know, far as assessing our coaches? You know, you know, I get some questions about, oh, who's going to be this coach for that? And, you know, after, you know, doing some research, you know, coaching jobs is for the year. I know there's coaches that's been there, you know, for a long period of time. But is there an assessment where, you know, as you, as the A.D., you look at a coach and saying, are they performing well? Were they not performing to the standards where we are as a Division One school? How do you determine that? Is there a team, or is that specifically just you?
Well, I think that what I've done is, and part of what we've always done, is we evaluate the coaches midway through the season, at the end of the season. I always try to meet with the coaches to go over their evaluations, and we talk about things that went well, things that were challenges and opportunities for us to grow, and to take an honest look in the mirror and just say, what can we do differently? And I mean, the conversation sometimes, I'm going to be honest, they're uncomfortable because, you know, you've worked with these people, you have relationships with them. But we're professionals, and ultimately, it's what's best for the kids, and are we doing what's best for them? And we'll continue to do that. And the other thing is, we always ask the coaches to give exit interviews with our underclassmen, just so they can meet with them and just discuss, hey, this is what we need to work on in the offseason. This is what you did well. This is what you struggled with. So you just need to have that relationship as a coach with your players, and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you. I know we have the relationship with TB-12. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in the weight room. Have you ever looked at, you know, hiring somebody or creating a position as a strength and conditioning coach that specifically works for a school that's in that locker room, you know, for eight hours, not just working with the football, but working with all the athletes in general?
We, I have put that in my budget request the past three years. I know that Nick and I have discussed that. That would be a benefit to not only the athletes, but the students here as being part of the wellness and physical education program. I would love to have somebody come in. And the guy that we have here now, Nick, who we, I mean, he's fantastic. Not this Nick, but Nick from TB-12, he's even said, if you ever get an opportunity where I could come into this full-time, he would, he would jump at the opportunity.
I looked at that, and I think, you know, I took a trip down to, to Florida, and what I seen was amazing, the way that they have their strength and conditioning in their curriculum with the, you know, with the football team. But I think, you know, you could also expand that even more. Knowing that opening day for the Red Sox is, actually, the Worcester Sox was today, and the Red Sox is a few days. How's our baseball team doing far as players? I mean, has numbers decreased with that? Because I know, I know there's probably like an issue at the middle school. From what I'm told, I hope I'm wrong. But, you know, how do we look at, you know, where is the baseball team, the facility? I know they're using Campanelli, and, you know, what's the, you know, the status with that stadium as well?
Well, as far as our numbers go, we were able to field three teams, so freshman JV and varsity, which is great. We had to apply for an eighth-grade waiver with the MIAA to get some eighth graders. I think we have five on our freshman team, and without them, we wouldn't be able to have one. I think we had seven freshmen sign up, but the five eighth graders that are there, I mean, they're there every day. Their parents get them to practice over at the Baker School or up here at the high school. And we have a good young group of kids that, that want to play. As far as the facilities go, I know that Jamie Domestico and our outside grounds guys have done a great job trying to get the Baker School and maintaining it. It just gets wet. It's just the, the nature of the field. And we've addressed some concerns with doing some repairs to the, to the surface, and we keep adding dirt. As far as our neighbor over here at Campanelli, I know Joyce and I, we talked on the way in. I mean, it needs, it needs a lot of TLC. It really does. Who is going to be responsible for that? That's, that's another discussion to be had. But where it was when I first got here six years ago and where it is now, it, it's gotten a lot worse, if I'm going to be honest.
That's, that's sad. That's very sad. What's the relationship with our athletic programs at the college level far as recruitment? You know, football, basketball, you know, what do we, I mean, I'm going back to, you know, when I was in school and football and, you know, Peter, God rest his soul, you know, they were getting letters from recruiters all the time to these top schools. Where are we, you know, I know you weren't here at the time, you know, far as, you know, getting our athletes to the, to the other, you know, higher level? Are we working with them, you know, far as looking at those programs?
Yeah. I know that Matt's part of our football coaching staff, and I know that they have great relationships with local colleges and universities, and they contact coaches about players that they think that compete at the next level. I mean, we've had a number of kids in many sports sign letters of intent to play Division One, Division Two that have earned scholarships. But I think recruiting in general has just changed over the years, just with social media. And now the kids are putting highlight videos, and they're emailing coaches, and they're texting coaches. I mean, it's just so much easier today to get in touch with a college coach than it was 15 or 20 years ago, just, just with social media and what tools that these kids have. I mean, I've seen some of these highlight reels that they've put together with music and flashes, and I mean, it's, it's pretty impressive.
Thank you. Just so, you know, can you touch base on, this is my last question. Can you touch base on Family ID, so the committee members can know exactly what it is? And what issues, you know, arise with that, the Family ID?
Honestly, I think that if there's one thing that has been a game changer for us is when we went over from paper registrations where a kid would fill out six pieces of paper, hand them to the coach, and the coach would lose some of them or misplace them. Family ID has been the best tool that we've used for, for athletic registration, and so many people are doing it now. I mean, other schools are using it. Most of the schools in our league use it. And the beauty of it is, if a kid comes in as a freshman, they register for football. All their information is saved, their address, the insurance number, everything else. And then if you want to play a winter sport, so if Tony would go in and says, hey, I'd like to register for basketball in the winter, they will say, is this Tony Rodriguez? Yes, it is. You click. It automatically populates the questions and all your personal information. If you want to edit it, you can. And the only thing that needs to be done is where the parent sign for consent to train or medical emergency or things of that nature. So it really is taking parents from filling out six pieces of paper and signing, and it would be, it would be a process. And now it's 15, 20 minutes tops that first time, and then maybe five minutes after that that they can register. And it's great because if a coach is on the road and a kid gets hurt, they just pull out their phone. They go to the emergency contact, they pull up the phone number, call mom or dad, hey, this is what's going on. We have to take your daughter or son to the hospital. This is what's going on. Everything is electronic, and we, we've had no issues. The coaches love it. Our trainer loves it. And I think now that the families have gotten used to registering their kids, I, I think they like it too. I've had nobody complain. Let's put it that way.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the, the update. I see, you know, you know, I'll look at the, that strength and conditioning, and then also, you know, with the facilities. You know, I'll bring that up when we have our full school committee meeting to see, you know, how we can address that. Jared, you have one question?
Sorry, just one last question. Is there anything coming up in terms of like summer sports programs or summer camps or anything like that for the younger kids or?
That would be a question from Matt, Community Schools.
Yeah, I, I know my kids have participated in the community schools.
High school, I mean, will do offseason workouts, hopefully with, with the TB-12 strength coaches, two or three days a week. But anything official and formal? No. Man, I've taken up a lot of time. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm very long-winded. I can see Nick rolling his eyes. Come on, dude. Like the gonk show, you're going to get the hook and take me off the stage.
Really quick. So with everything, honestly, I've been listening to everything you said. It sounds like we legitimately have a recruitment issue. And so I guess one of the things I wanted to bring up is, we thought about this at the last meeting when we had Jess Hodges talk about marketing, and I just, I don't understand why we don't have a marketing campaign for just athletics.
Well, one of the things we do have, I mean, our Instagram page, we have close to 1,800 followers on there. And our Facebook and social media, we, we try to push as many highlights and celebrate success as much as we can. But one of the things that we struggle with is a lot of times that college coaches were to come out to see our kids. They're in-season. So a basketball player, for example, I mean, you won't, it's very difficult to get somebody that's in-season and they're traveling to come here on a Friday night because a lot of times they have games. So that's why the video and the, and just sharing huddle film is, I mean, that's the way that a lot of college coaches recruit now. They'll say, hey, Nick, send me two minutes of highlights. And the kid will put a huddle tape together, email it to the coach. And even though we don't necessarily see that personal interaction between coach and kid coming to Brockton High School, it, it does happen.
No, no, no. I think, I'm sorry. I probably should have clarified. I believe that 100%. What I'm trying to say is that you need more help with that. And so one of the things we talked about is... And so one of the things we talked about is developing possibly a program where we can devise a template that we could have the photography club. We could have the journalism club. They can automatically upload instantaneously social media content if they're at a game or, you know, I mean, those types of things so that it's not a, it's not just a structured social media campaign. It's impromptu, like if somebody's at a game, like students speaking to students. And then we also talked about the scholarships. We had a list of scholarships and we were thinking about advertising the students that have been accepted to certain schools. I mean, I don't, we should be also talking about the extracurricular activities they did. Like I can't imagine that somebody that got accepted to Stanford University only was involved in academics. So what else happened while they enjoyed their time here at Brockton High? Those are the things that we want to feature. Basically like what is our athletic value proposition? You know, why would a student want to be in athletics at Brockton High? I think we have to zero in on that and that becomes part of the recruitment campaign that we're working on with Jess Hodges, because I just don't think it gets enough airtime. I think the time that you're putting in, you guys are doing the best you can, but it needs, we need help. That, that's my spiel.
No, I, no, I agree with you totally. It's like, I always mention it, you know, when I log on to social media, I'm seeing Severin, I'm seeing CM, you know, they're showcasing their athletics. So, you know, when I log on, I want to see Brockton, you know, I want to see our football program. I want to see our, you know, hockey, you know, build that up, our baseball, you know, getting more airplay in it. You know, that falls under, under Jess Hodges. So that definitely needs some work between her office and our athletics. So, but thank you very much for your overview.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Nick, if you want to step up to the podium and give us your?
Good evening. Nick Lee, Director of Phys Ed Middle School Athletics. I'm just going to give you a quick overview. We have inter murals at every level. We have about 180 plus kids participating in inter murals across the city at the elementary level. Middle school's only about 150 plus because that becomes a problem, especially in the wintertime with middle school sports. There's really no place to go. We, we only have one gym. So trying to, most of the times the schools will have the inter murals in the morning, which is a great idea. They have it open an hour before school starts and then the teams practice in the gyms in the afternoon. At BHS, we have 60 plus kids in our inter mural program and about 25 participate in a new boxing program that we have. William Sproles out of the champion runs it. He does a great job with the kids. And we started with about five and that's gone to 25 in a couple of months. So I think that may, that may get to about 50 or 75 before long. Middle school athletics, we've got seven middle schools, 14 sports at each school. We have football, cross country, soccer, boys and girls, boys and girls basketball, boys, coed volleyball, boys and girls track. There's, there's 30 plus middle school coaches. A lot of them coach multiple sports. And I wrote down a couple of things here because I heard you mention about the mentor program or how we can get more mentors. So pre-pandemic, I tried to figure out if I could flip flop all the seasons and either have high school varsity athletes come down, officiate, coach or mentor these kids in opposite seasons. Like Kevin said, a lot of the college coaches, they're coaching during season. So a lot of that recruiting. So same thing with Brockton High with the varsity athletes. You know, if you're playing a fall sport as a varsity athlete, you can't really help me with fall sports. So I wanted to possibly throw the idea out to play soccer in the spring, basketball in the spring, track in the fall and flip flop it. But the problem you run into, like Kevin said, is AAU travel teams. So soccer, they do all the travel teams in the springtime. So then it kind of would defeat the purpose because my idea of, of the middle school athletic program is to feed the high school. And I don't think we'd get all our top athletes playing if we decide to flip flop the season. So I'm still kicking the tires on that because that is a good idea. The biggest problem I have with middle school is physicals. I got to look at 12 year olds and tell them they can't participate because they don't have a physical. I mean, my mom took me to my physical. So I've gone on Cape Verdean radio station. I've tried everything to get physicals out. When we played, Tony, we used to have right on site, you go and get your physical at Brockton High and then you good for the year. I know that there was a reason that went away. I'm not sure why, but I need to figure out a way to get all these kids' physicals in, in August for the, for the year. That's my biggest issue. And when we talk about recruiting, especially after the pandemic, is getting kids a physical to play. That's the biggest problem I have. I mean, we have probably 800 plus kids participating in middle school sports and we could probably have 1,200 easy, if there was an easy way to get a physical. I mean, I looked into taking temporary guardianship one time and taking a busload of kids because I wouldn't have gone to school if I didn't have sports. So that's really a big issue for me. If there was any way, questions is good.
Kath?
What about removing the health center to Brockton High? Wouldn't we be able to consider helping Nick with some of those physicals? If we have the health center right on campus eventually?
I think we would have to bring the health director in to see how that would work. And they would have to coordinate that, you know, as far as transporting those students to the health facility.
I'm trying to brainstorm because we've been talking about, you know, the, the health center coming up and being here at Brockton High.
Right.
And if we could kill two birds with one stone and there'd be a way that we could help you out to be able to get some of these kids' physicals, even though I realize they still need a parent's signature and whatnot. But if we could make it at least easy for them, you know, like if you build it, they will come type thing.
Right.
If that might be a possibility to at least decrease or increase the amount of physicals you get or don't get.
I would be interested in anything that we could do.
Tony, if I could just add in, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this earlier. We do have sports for signature health here. If we hire their physicians to come here and Matt can attest, we had two days from five o'clock to seven o'clock free of charge to show up. We have 14 kids. Everybody that did 14 in two days. And we put reminders out. I mean, it's, it's just a struggle that, I mean, we just, not only for you, but we just. I mean, we, we give that to them. All the times I worked, so we went from four to seven. We went from four to seven. So I mean, just make an appointment. And we just can't get people to take advantage of it.
Gotcha. Okay.
It's unfortunate. Any questions? Nick, are you done or are you?
Yeah, I'm done.
Just a quick, is there anything that you see, is transportation an issue for the middle school kids? Like high school kid might be a little bit different, middle school kids.
As far as getting physicals?
Or, I'm sorry, I'm thinking in terms of like participation, if that is a barrier to kids participating or staying after school to participate in the sports.
I think a lot of issues are, I mean, when I, when I grew up, my brother was two, two years younger than me. I mean, what you're seeing a lot now is a lot of these kids are going home to take care of younger siblings. So that, that is an issue for participation. The kids are doing what, what they're supposed to do, but I don't think we saw that as much when we were growing up here as, as evident as it is now. I mean, that's a, that's a real, I mean, I, I have a lot of kids. I've had parents call me to see if they could schedule things later and the, later in the day. But I've, I've, I've looked at the seven middle schools. I would say there's at least 15 to 20 kids at each school that don't participate in sports because of daycare issues.
Any other questions?
I have one question. I don't know if this is to Nick or to Kevin, but just a question about, so I know in the high school level, there's about 997 students. And then in, you mentioned 180 inter murals and 150 plus for sports. I just wonder out of those students, are there any of them that are coming from the alternative education that we have? Are they having similar opportunities or even the middle school? I know some students get alternate education. Right now they're at the Promise Academy, I think. So do they have access to this?
They do.
Something, okay.
They do.
And how does that look usually?
They, so I, I will start each season with, you know, with an email to all the principals about participation. I send that out to all those schools as well. So those kids will go, every, every kid at Promise is at an allotted school. And then they're, they're, they're sent to Promise for a certain amount of time, then they return back to their school. So they're all notified. As far as the champion, they're notified as well and free to participate. And, and what, what we're trying to do is, I'm working with Kelly now, is we're trying to figure out if they can have their own separate program to represent Promise. It was a unique thing about our middle school program is we don't play anybody outside of Brockton. So we, we have seven middle schools. We compete against each other. On occasion, somebody will call me and I'll schedule games to play just more games. Because to me, the more games, the better. So we're, we're trying to figure out a way to have them represent their own school, which I think is a good idea. No one wants to be the, the, going to another school to play. They always want to play for their own school. So we're, we're tossing that idea around, just trying to figure out a way, a way to do it for Kelly and the Promise.
Is that a budget concern at all?
I don't think it's necessarily a budget concern. It's, there's a lot of kids in and out of that school at this point. So next year would be a better, we'd get a better idea of how many kids are going to have, what kind of offerings we could have. And that'll probably start the end of this year or the two weeks before we start school next year. We could get some numbers together and figure out how many kids we're going to have, if we can field a team. That was really why we got rid of baseball because I think I had 11 kids sign up for baseball, seven schools, and four of them didn't have gloves. So I said to Superintendent Thomas, I'm going to need an ambulance at every school if I continue this. I mean, that's why, I was a baseball player. So it was, it was really hard for me to get rid of baseball, but it was not, in my eyes, feeding the high school in any way, shape or form. So we moved to track and field. That was really the reason why we, we moved away from it because it was not, it was not competitive. We had four out of the seven schools that didn't make it through seven innings for a whole year. So it was, it was sad to see, but it was time to make a change. And in my eyes, if I could get more kids involved with middle school athletics by offering track and field, try to get 40 kids involved at each school, 280 kids citywide. That's why we made that move. It was tough.
So then you mentioned the Promise Academy, but then when we think about the champion and the key, and the others, like the Edison and the other alternative schooling, would they have their own teams or would they just be integrated?
I'm not sure about Edison. That would be, I'm not, I don't believe Edison can try out for Brockton High. I don't believe that. As far as the champion, depends on what level. Those high school kids can try out for high school athletics.
Okay, but they'll be with Brockton High School, not with the other schools?
Right, right.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like turf fields too, Tony.
With all the sports that we have at, at the middle school, what sports are you looking to introduce? You know, to build on, I know last year was, you know, the inaugural season for football. I've been to a few games and that's a huge success and I see that growing tremendously with Matt Cameron involved. What other sports do you think that could be an asset to feed the high school?
See, the problem for us is the space at the middle school. So it depends on, you know, what sports we'd be looking at. I mean, I'd be open to, to anything. I mean, at this point, we literally go from one sport to the other. I mean, we're going to finish volleyball April 26th. We're going to start track May 1st. And that's the same way, same transition into every sport. There's not much, there's not much time in between. It's not, we, we kind of go by our own seasons. I don't go off of Kevin's season. So we really transition right away into every sport. So as far as, we'd have to offer something in addition. And my worry with that would be generally, I would say 50% of the kids that participate at each middle school play multiple sports. I think at this point, with the number of sports we're offering right now, is, is, we're at a good number, I believe. But I'd be open to, to anything to, I mean, if it's going to involve kids and, and give them something to do, I'd be willing to do and look at whatever you'd like.
So I, I mean, like field hockey, lacrosse, I mean, my son, I mean, he's in college now, but he was doing an inter mural and his senior year was the first year for lacrosse. And we're looking at trying to implement that at the middle school level as well, even swimming. You know, you know, I look at it like every athletic sport that's played here at the high school level should be offered at the middle school to be that feeder system. So we don't, and I know there's, I'm assuming also that, you know, you have issues with, you know, when it comes to scheduling because of all the sports and then you just added, you know, middle school football.
Yes. Swimming would be interesting. We'd have to do it, we'd have to do it at Brockton High. But I do agree with you. I mean, the idea that there are some sports offered at the high school that have no feeder at the middle school level makes it really difficult. I mean, they've had, how long have they had field hockey, Kevin?
10 years.
10 years and we, we, so she, she has no feeder program at all. So the girls that go to play field hockey, unless they've played outside of the city, they've never played before. So she's behind the eight ball right away. If, if there's space to do it, the, you know, what you run into is in the fall, when field hockey's offered, we're running cross country, football and girls and boys soccer at each middle school. At the Plough, we have to use snow field. The problem is the space. And so if we started looking at adding sports, I think we'd have to start looking at alternative sites as well, which is possible, especially with our own transportation company now, which is, was rocky at the start, but it, it's gone a lot better. I've been doing middle school athletics for eight years and I would say from December on has been, has been great for me. Because it was always very difficult because we're with the tiers of getting, getting buses for the middle school athletics. We're always last on, on the totem pole to, to get buses. So that situation has been awesome recently. Yeah.
Tennis and golf, we have that at the high school. Do we have that at the middle school?
Love to do golf, Tony.
Or do we?
I'd love to do golf.
Do we offer those student, let's say, for example, you only have five kids in the whole middle school. Do you bring them up to the high school or does it just, you know, get wiped off the table? Sorry, we can't accommodate you.
If, if we have no tennis courts at any middle schools now, the only ones are at Brockton High. And again, it's, it's again, something that we'd have to do opposite of the high school, which is possible. Kevin does tennis in the spring. It could be something that we try and do in the, in the fall. I still want to venture down that, that road of trying to do everything opposite to try and involve the high school athletes. Because I do think, like you mentioned earlier, I do think that's a big, that would be a great addition and a great idea because you're right, when these kids at the middle school level can look and see somebody like them having success at the high school, first of all, it's great for the kids, but it's also a lure to Brockton High, which is what we want. When we grew up, the thought of going anywhere else was crazy. We all wanted to go to Brockton High ever since we were six years old and that's what we need to get back, get back to. So if that means adding multiple sports programs at the middle school level to feed the high school, then I'm in. I'll teach the golf.
I agree with you. When I look at the, you know, looking at the middle school sports, when we played midget football, we had the A team and the B team. Are we, you know, how, I know the numbers are dropped, but let's say for example, basketball, are we able to do an A and a B team at the middle school level for like basketball or any, to give more kids the opportunity to play? Instead of, you know, let's say you get 30 kids to try out, you don't want to just say, sorry, you, you can't cut it, Kent. Is there a way of doing like an A team and a B team where the kids have more opportunity to participate in the sport?
At some schools, yes. At others, no. What I would love to happen is, I would love to have one team citywide at a middle school level that competed outside of Brockton. I think that would be, in the grand scheme of things, we just had basketball that ended. So you have seven boys teams, about 100 kids that are on those middle school teams. 85 of them are going to get cut next year, you know? So I think, you know, the idea of having a tryout with one team citywide. Um, so I think, you know, the idea of having, uh, a tryout with one team citywide for each sport that compete outside, those kids play together, um, cause you, you said you, earlier, you're, you're reading about CM and Zavarian, that's what they're doing. They're doing it at the middle school level and they're connecting their buildings to, um, six to 12. So they're getting a head start, those kids are playing together in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and then they're playing together at the varsity level. So I think if there was a possibility to have one team at each level that combined all seven schools, almost like an all-star team that competed outside, um, that to me would be the ultimate feeder program. Cause then you could have more kids participate, uh, in each sport, um, but you're gonna have, you know, the elite players playing on, on one team that ultimately would be your feeder for Brockton High.
I'm gonna put you on the spot, how come it's not happened?
I don't know, it's, it's, um, it's something we've all talked about. Um, I think it's about, I have ideas of who I would want to coach different levels and, and I think it's very possible. Um, there are multiple, I mean, multiple towns around here that only have one middle school team. So, uh, I get calls all the time, uh, to play outside of the, the city. I mean, I think if, if it was possible to have one team, that would be ideal. That would be, that would be something that would, would actually feed the high school. Um, and you could have coaches from up here start working with those players like the teams we're competing against, or falling behind for that matter.
Well, I'm gonna encourage you and push you and hopefully, you know, that, that happens soon. Um, and you're there, you're working, you know, you see what, what's needed and, you know, I encourage you to do that. As far as when it comes to, um, you know, I don't wanna talk premature, I know there's, um, work being done to address our middle school, uh, facilities, um, not just the field, uh, making it into a complex. Um, the superintendent's not here, so he, um, he'll be able to touch on that, you know, further, you know, what we, uh, plan on doing at the middle school level.
Yeah, I think the, the, another, or be the guy that stands up here with the problems, but when we grew up, there was four middle schools that was set up for, you know, with all the fields. Now that we have, we have the Davis, Pluff, and Ashfield, we're all elementary schools. So that, they're now middle schools and, and, I mean, the, we don't even play games in the Ashfield gym, cause it's so small. So, um, space is a big issue, especially at those schools. Um, so when you, when you talk about adding sports, I mean, ultimately, I'm into adding anything, uh, but it's not, i- i- it's very difficult to add in one, maybe easy to add in, in one school, like West may be easy to add another sport, not so easy at the Ashfield. Um, so it's, it's worrying about s- seven different places, that's where the problems come about. But I agree with you wholeheartedly, if we're gonna feed the high school, then we should have multiple, every sport that they're offering. It just, it gets difficult with space, that's, that's really a big issue. And the physicals, I gotta figure out a way for physicals.
Thank you. Um, any more questions from the committee members? Nick, thank you.
Thank you.
I see we need, uh, you know, we have some work to do and, uh, and I know we can accomplish that and, uh, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Uh, Matt, you wanna give us a quick overview, uh, on your side?
Hi, I'm Matt Campbell, I'm the coordinator of, uh, recreation programs for the community schools. So, uh, community schools oversees a lot of the youth sports in the city and we have a couple of middle school programs as well. Uh, we supervise, uh, BCB basketball, which is the largest youth basketball in the city. Uh, Mr. Lewis is the coordinator of that. This year, we had over 300 kids signed up. Uh, we're expanding our wrestling o- offerings. Uh, wrestling is run by DeShawn Fentress and Mark Mendes, who are the wrestling coaches at, uh, Brockton High School. They oversee it and they've done a phenomenal job. There's, given the season, it's more or less year round, there's somewhere at any time between 30 and 70 kids wrestling. And now they're bringing it to some of the other schools in the city. Uh, sh- city, and I believe wisely, has invested in, uh, wrestling equipment and moving some stuff into, uh, some of the other schools as well. Uh, we have swimming, we have a swimming program, uh, obviously, there's only one pool that we have access to, so that takes place here. A couple of the other things that we do, we have, we supervise, uh, travel basketball in the city, which is more or less, it's a, you have to make the team, it's a, it's an all-star team. Uh, the program is supervised by, uh, Juan Ortega, Kenny Montero, and Peter Ramos, who are all parents of kids in the school district. Uh, they play in the Metro South, excuse me, the Metro West Basketball League, uh, that is for pay, that is a pay program. There's some of our community school, everything that I've mentioned so far does have a price tag to it. Uh, and we work very hard to try and keep the price down. Uh, primarily, we're able to do that because we control, we control our own gyms. Uh, probably between 70 and 80 kids take place, travel basketball. This past year, we had eight teams, all of them did very well, uh, went very well, and those guys did a phenomenal job, uh, coordinating that. We, Community Schools has partnered with, uh, Brockton Track Club for a number of years. Uh, Mr. Fidalgo runs that, uh, he's the track, one of the track coaches here at Brockton High. Uh, somewhere between 300 and 400 kids. Uh, we're hoping for a little bit less last year in the pandemic, we had to go three nights, that's on Mondays and Wednesdays, May and June, and into July. Uh, we are partnered with Brockton Baseball. So for those of you that have been around Brockton a while, a couple of years ago, uh, the old Brookfield Little League merged with West Little League. And the, them president approached us a few years ago about, uh, you know, basically, we provide logistical support, they run the league. Uh, we try and, you know, take out the permits for the fields, you know, equipment, trying to keep the prices down as much as possible. And that league is now under the direction of Joe Berlino and Aaron Montero. Aaron is a phys ed teacher here and a pretty good baseball player, I went to college with him at Stonehill and he was pretty good. Uh, he's also one of our middle school football coaches. Uh, this past year, we started middle school football, uh, like any program, it has some, it had some growing pains, but we ended up with about 164 players, four teams, uh, we co-opted. Uh, West was the only, of the, of the seven middle schools, West is the only one that had enough kids to have its own team. Uh, they had over 50 kids play. East and Pluff, between the two of them, had probably about 25 kids in each building, so they had over 50. Uh, Ashfield and North was the smallest of the teams, uh, primarily because North doesn't have an eighth grade yet. So we're expecting numbers to grow up, uh, we expect it to rise by about 100, 80 to 100 kids more next year, and that is a free program. Uh, South and Davis, uh, were the, was the fourth team last year, and they also had some students from the Huntington and, I, yeah, the Huntington, as one of the alternative schools, cause of its proximity to South. Uh, like Mr. Lee and Mr. Kero said, we have a trou- we have trouble attracting female athletes. So in the fall, we're gonna be trying to do an elementary school girls' basketball program after school, once or twice a week. Uh, still putting the plans together on that, and we'll offer flag football opposite of that outside. Uh, if I can address, you know, the problems we have, like Mr. Lee said, physicals is a huge issue. You know, I coached football here at Brockton High, I used to be one of the track coaches, physicals are an issue. Get, and it's, i- it's just very difficult to get the kids their physicals before school starts. And then as school starts, it's hard to track the physicals. Um, so any help, anybody has any ideas about that, that would be tremendous. Uh, other problem is, and I echo Mr. Kero and Mr. Lee said, is we just don't have a lot of space. Uh, the four old junior highs where we play middle school football, we, uh, they were, they were built a long time ago. And the field, I mean, North probably has the largest field space, but it does not drain well. We played games last year at East, West, and we needed a third field, cause we have four teams. We won't, we were, had to play at the Parmenta Playground over at BB Russell, which is not a, there's not a lot of parking, it's not the most fam-friendly place to go. Uh, the field at East doesn't drain well, West is gentle rolling hills, it's, they're not football fields. They're not, they not really soccer fields, but it's what we have. So any, you know, that is, you know, just where we're at in terms of facilities. Gym time is, you know, a constant topic of debate, we only have so many full-size gyms in the city. And there's a lot of kids that wanna play basketball, there's a lot of kids that wanna play soccer. And so gym time, a- anything after middle school basketball is gobbled up and it's, you know, just if we have more gyms, we have more fields, it'd be a little easier to accommodate a lot more stuff. Uh, I guess that's it, uh, does anybody have any questions?
Any, can any members have any questions for Mr. Campbell?
Um, I, you know, we've touched on facilities with, you know, our turf fields. Um, I know Nick said that our middle schools, they only play against each other, but, uh, football is different. So if you wanna touch on that?
Certainly, uh, football is, we, we started as a new program this year and you had a lot of interest in it. I said we had 164 people, we do play teams outside of the league. We are in the Eastern Mass Middle School Football League, uh, which is, encompasses the Southern Division where we play most of our games. Uh, is the four teams from Brockton, Randolph, uh, Mashpee. Kids from Ma- uh, Martha's Vineyard made three trips to Brockton last year, uh, to play teams up here. One of the, their fourth trip got rain, uh, I believe got rained out one, the night we had the big windstorm. So we do play kinda all over, we had a game scheduled, uh, versus Hopkinton at one point, uh, that didn't come off. Uh, transportation was an issue to start the year, it got much better. We were busing all the kids to practice from the sending school, which would have been the Davis, Ashfield, uh, and Pluff to the main school. And then, you know, we weren't able to do that anymore as the transportation's just, uh, kinda deteriorated for a little bit, I'm sure you're all aware. Uh, by the end of the year, transportation was much smoother. Uh, we're hoping with that program to have some internal sort of JV games, uh, amongst ourselves, so that, you know, sixth graders and seventh graders get to play a little bit more. Uh, on the northern side of that, we have some games, we're hoping to schedule some games next year with, uh, Woburn participates, uh, Wilmington, Winchester, uh, Belmont, uh, Reading, Woburn has two teams, Sargus. We had games this year at Weston, Wellesley, and Concord, Colyle. Excuse me, Concord, I don't think Colyle was involved.
Thank you, uh, those are some wealthy communities, so coming into Brockton, I think we have to, uh, address our facilities.
Yeah, it is striking, uh, parents commented and a lot of the kids, I mean, everybody would like to play Maciano Stadium. Kevin knows, I beg Kevin for any ti- any night. Uh, our games are primarily in middle school football played on Wednesday nights, and I beg Kevin for any night we can get. And usually, the other team is accommodating, they'll come in here on a Monday night, seems to be the night we could get a couple of dates. But, you know, most of these other towns, they're playing on turf, they're playing in very well-maintained facilities, very well, I mean, they are wealthier communities, and it does, you know, the kids notice. I mean, we had just very nice uniforms, you had good, very good success, all the teams won cup, won some games, we had some very good efforts. Uh, but, you know, you, we're playing in old fields, uh, at old schools, and it does kinda show. And that's, you know, if we have more turf, we have more lights is an issue. Uh, it gets dark out and the season goes into November, you know, if, you know, games are supposed to start at four, if you can't get there till fi- you know, a lot of these teams come down, they get stuck in traffic, doesn't start till five, it's dark by 5:45. So it, you know, we are in need of, of facilities upgrade, I think that, I think everyone here would agree with that.
I agree with you. One thing that, you know, I spoke to Mrs. Ellis is, um, I didn't hear anything about esports. Is that something that we are entertaining, do we have, um, at the high school level?
So we actually, when, a couple of years ago, when I was stationed downtown, we did have a vendor wanted to come in and do esports. Uh, uh, Dr. DeBarros asked me to do some vetting of it, and it was not something that we were gonna pursue at that time. Uh, I honestly don't know a lot about it, I know it is very popular, I mean, kids love video games. Uh, I think we would have to have a lot of education in it and how it goes before we delve too deep into that. It'd be something we probably have to pursue with, you know, an existing league, would have to kinda walk us through that.
Tony, I understand, we'll get into that, I think we're going back to you. Just started with a guy over in the corner.
Thank you.
Cause he give all scholarships, correct?
Yeah. Any questions from the committee members? Salas?
I'm not sure who this question is for, but, um, the person that you're talking to, is he a coach? Is he, I'm just curious.
Oh, I actually, he's one of the, one of the, uh, one of my neighbor's friends and just started in another school district. And I mean, this is at the infancy, I just talked to him and wanted to sit down with him, I should be sitting down with him the next couple of weeks, kinda see what we can do, we talked about possibly doing something, uh, after school at Brockton High first. Uh, but I really think that it's something that would strive at the middle school level and the alternative schools. Um, so I can report back once I get more information myself, cause I mean, I'm not a gamer, I never was. I, I had Nintendo, a regular Nintendo, like 10 years after everybody had it. So I have, I don't know how to do any of it, so I'm gonna meet with this guy and see just what, what are the possibilities are, what would cost to start up a pilot something somewhere.
If you need any help, let me know, cause I've done a ton of research and went through this whole thing for an esports program in college. And I really think this is something that would be attractive to our students. Um, it, and it's a revenue generator, believe it or not, so just let me know. But I think it's something, I was talking to Tony about it, I'm like, I think this is, could be a game changer. And I am not, clearly, I'm not a gamer, I know nothing about the competitions, but I do know that, um, I do know that the competitions are a huge draw for other students at other high schools and other schools as well. So it gets the whole community in, because you're, you know, you can come in and participate in, in competitions and not necessarily be going to that high school, but then be drawn to that high school or school, because you wanna be part of that team. So I, um, just, you know, let me know, but, um, I do think it's something that we should seriously, seriously consider. Yeah, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, any more questions from the committee members? Jared?
Sorry, Matt, I'm gonna throw this one back at you again, any, anything coming up in the summer programs for the kids? I know we've done, I know track, I know that.
Absolutely, we have, obviously, we have track club, we will be running our traditional Get Ready program. Uh, we're trying to get lacrosse built into that, uh, I'm hoping that happens. Uh, just to get something off the ground with lacrosse, we have tons of lacrosse equipment. Uh, from when West had a team a few years ago, we've gotten a couple of grants for lacrosse. So we're hoping to start building something with, in that through Get Ready. Uh, there's, uh, we have Get Ready, we have Junior Boxer Camp in the afternoon. Uh, there's a lot of stuff at the, the elementary schools, a lot of the extended day, the kids go in, they'll play basketball, uh, go out in the, uh, in the field and run around, basically have gym class built in, but Get Ready will be the biggest sports program we have.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Campbell, for your time and, uh, presentation. Uh, we'll move on to arts program with Mrs. Sarah Richards and give us an overview of the wonderful arts program.
Good evening. Um, after two years of virtual art shows and virtual plays and an outdoor musical, we are very excited uh, to be back inside and have live art shows and, um, working on the musical. So we have some upcoming shows, we have the annual Harbor One, it's the 36th Annual Harbor One Art Show, which is the high school art show, which we're very fortunate to have Harbor One sponsor every year. Um, that show will be up May 3rd, um, May 3rd through 5th, and we're having a reception on the 3rd from 5 to 7. Um, and invitations will be coming soon, there's a quick peek at one. Um, then we also have a, our K to 8, our annual K to 8 art show, uh, which will be at the Brockton Public Library in the multipurpose room. Um, that is May 24th to June 2nd, and there's a little preview of the invitations that are being printed that you'll get soon. Um, so we've just been really excited to have the kids in person all year and to be able to, you know, produce art. Um, we did teach art virtually, and I think we did a very nice job, but it's just so much more enjoyable to have the kids with us. Um, so we've had, uh, two main focuses this, this year. One was, um, artistic literacy, so the idea that kids, it, you know, it falls in with the, the districts, active reading and writing. writing goal. And the idea that kids are not only creating artwork, but they're reading, they're writing, and they're speaking about their own artwork and artwork of others. So we've worked K-12 to integrate that. The idea that the writing and the reading and the research, it makes their artwork better. The other focus we've had is artistic intent. And that goes along with building a culturally responsive curriculum. The idea that when you look at our students' artwork, you can see them in it. They are making artwork about who they are, with, you know, their backgrounds, where their families are from, their community, things that interest them, that it really reflects who they are. So you can see that in the work. And hopefully if you come to the art shows, you'll see that when you, when you see their work. We've also done some work really reflecting on the artists and the art movements that we introduce to kids to make sure that those are very diverse, that our kids see themselves in the curriculum that we're offering. And that we're telling more than one story, right? We're telling multiple perspectives about people and culture, art, you know. Art goes back as far as time and every culture has made art. And how do we teach kids about that and integrate that? So that's, that's been our big focus this year. You know, we have 30 art teachers, K-12 in this district. It's always been supported very well. The high school did really well in the UMass Dartmouth Emerging Young Artists Award this year. We got 14 awards in that, in that competition. You know, we're gearing up for the drama club, the musical Hello Dolly. We're just starting to build it now. So we're excited about that. And, you know, spring is really great for us because we get to showcase everything we've been working all year on. And after two years of not being able to do that, well, we've done it, but in different ways, you know, it's exciting. So you'll get invitations to all these things and I hope you come.
Thank you. Open the floor to any questions from the committee members. Mrs. Ellis?
Thank you so much. And just a quick question. Art is so very personal to some people. I guess my question is, do we give our students, granted the pandemic is gone, but do they have the opportunity to go to see, like, art shows, like Frida? I mean, I'm just, you know, right now that's like the big one, but like the Museum of Fine Arts, do they have an opportunity to be able to see true artwork outside? And I'm just curious if we're, if we're giving them that opportunity to experience art outside of the classroom?
We have a partnership with the Fuller Craft Museum. I actually sit on their board for the superintendent. So we traditionally have done third and fifth grade tours over there. So each third grade and fifth grade gets to go with their class. There's certain exhibits, the teachers go over ahead of time, tour it, they do a pre-activity and a post-activity. Those have been virtual the last two years. This year too, because we didn't know how it was going to pan out in the beginning of the year. But I look forward to getting back to that in next year. We've also here from the high school, had trips into the MFA, Stewart Gardner Museum, Mass College of Art. When we usually participate in that UMass Dartmouth Emerging Young Artist Shows, they have an exhibition. So the kids that get work accepted there go down to see that. I'm always up for more opportunities to take kids farther. But the Fuller is really a great resource and it's a museum right here. So over last year, because all the shows are virtual, we did have a senior art show at the Fuller Craft Museum in their community gallery. So all the seniors, you know, our AP kids or studio kids that have worked so hard, that really didn't get an art show there junior year or senior year. We had work over there last, and it was up all summer and it was just really nice. And even simple things like we do Art Smart, which is an art show at the library, was interesting. When we had the reception, the kids came in and I don't know if it's because they haven't really had art shows in a couple of years, they were like, oh, it looks so professional. And that is a professional gallery there and we do put the kids' work in frames. So it looks really.
That's wonderful.
Really nice and they get excited about that.
Yeah, no, that's exactly what I was hoping you'd say. Thank you very much.
But I'd love to take them to Frida too, that would be great.
Any other questions? Jared Homer?
Thank you. Is it, do you have any numbers or any ideas about, are there any kids who are participating in like dual enrollment art through either like partnerships with any of the community colleges, the local colleges? Do kids have advanced? I know we have such advanced offerings here in the high school. I don't know if there's anything beyond that because I know we're producing some really talented artists. I don't know if they're reaching out while they're still in school and extending that.
We have AP and IB art, which are our most advanced here. Years ago, we had a dual enrollment with Mass College of Art, but that hasn't happened in a while. So no, we don't currently have anything. I think UMass Dartmouth would be a great place to start with that. We have a great relationship with them. They usually come and judge our art show and we send kids, kids there a lot. You know, our kids tend to go to UMass Dartmouth, Mass Art, Leslie. Those are the local ones that they go to. Then we always have some going to New York and RISD and that kind of stuff. But, but UMass Dartmouth and Mass Art and Leslie are the, the big ones. So we could reopen that with Mass Art, yeah.
Any other questions? I know we talked about, you know, we've been really on the social media presence across the district. What are you doing as far as like on the arts, on the arts side showcasing these students and their creativity on the social media platform?
Yep, we do have a BPS art department Facebook page. And we post from the high school and then I have a teacher from the middle school and the elementary that post to that on a regular. So it's special events, special awards, but it can be simply, you know, the students at North Middle School are working on self-portraits and it's some work. And then all the art shows, of course, we, we send all those invitations out to the enterprise and to everyone we can think of.
Where does the arts program fall into our alternative schools?
They're part of the whole program. I have a teacher at the Champion and they participate in the art shows. So whichever grade level, they'll either participate in Harbor One here or the K-8. So it fits right in. It's, there's no seamless.
One last question. What struggles do you have with the whole overall arts program? Or do you not have any? This is the time. Funding, materials?
You know, I'm happy to have, have the 30, the 30 teachers we have, you know, that's, I think, the right amount for right for this year. It's been good. Consumable materials have always been funded well as far as art, you know, drawing and painting materials. If I have to answer, I'd say it's the auditorium, it's the lights and the sound in the auditorium. That's our biggest struggle.
Sound and lighting?
Yeah. That's, that would be the drama club's struggle.
Now what specific issues?
Well, we have a system, we have a system from the 80s, I believe. And it's a, it's a, it's a system that has 121, 20 dimmers. They have like dimmer cards and control cards. When we redid this little theater, we took the dimmer system from here and we use it to replace out there. It's just an old system. It's out of date. You can't buy there, you can't buy those cards anymore. So we're coming to the end of the life of that, of that dimmer system. And I do have concerns about its reliability. We are in conversations about this, so I think, you know, we'll address it, but.
Quick question. Dollar figure, how much do you think that would cost?
Over a million.
Over a million? Aldo will not sleep.
You asked, I didn't volunteer that information.
This committee is for, we want to know what, you know, what we need.
Yeah.
That's why we, you know, we created this committee, so. Any further questions? Mrs. Menace?
Can you, it sounds like in regards to the classes being offered, it sounds like it's paint and drawing. Are there any ceramics, sculpture, other art classes that are offered?
Yes, yes, yes. So K-8, it's general art classes. They do clay, they do all different things within that class, but it's a general art class. When they get up here to the high school, we have art explorations, drawing and painting one, drawing and painting two, advanced drawing and painting, AP art, illustration, printmaking, ceramics one, ceramics two, sculpture, photography, photography two, digital art one and two, acting one and two, theatrical set design, musical theater production, play production, history of theater, aesthetics of film, producing television programs, television multicamera production, advanced television and media production, IB art one and two, IB theater one and two. So we have, we have 30 different classes here at the high school and we run 176 sections. So each year about 3,900 kids are enrolled in an art class. So it's, it's a big program here at the high school and, you know, I inherited a big, great program and it's my, feel my job to maintain it and we've always had that. And Brockton has always traditionally supported the arts, theater, music, visual art, you know, it's really, it's one of the best places to be for that. And we should, you know, be really proud of that and thankful to the community that has supported it and the school committees over and over again have supported it.
Any further, Mrs. Ellis?
So I just thought of this, which randomly, I don't know why I didn't bring it up before, but Brookline High School has an amazing adult education, continuing education program. And ironically enough, that's where I learned how to play golf, Nick. And I took an art class there once and it was like $40, but it was like something, you know, it was not serious, but it was a revenue generator for the high school. I, I guess I'm just curious, have we ever thought about that? Have we ever done anything like that? Like, I mean, you see these, you know, I'm just saying, you see paint nights everywhere. Like, these are some of the funner programs, if I can say. These are some of the funner classes, enjoyable. And I was just curious.
I'm speaking a little before my time, so I may not have it totally accurate, but, you know, these were built as community schools, right? So they had tons of adult classes at night. That was kind of the big claim to fame of, of the school system. And so, yeah, we had, there were lots of adult classes. Since I've been here at the, teaching here at the high school, we used to have an adult digital art class and a couple of little things, but it hasn't been as robust as it has been in the past. Those all ran through community schools.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any further questions? Well, thank you, Mrs. Richards, for the update and thank you for the great work that you're doing for the district.
Thank you. Good evening.
We'll move on to music program and we have Mr. Michael Smith will give us an overview.
Good evening. The music department, I'll tell you a few things that are going on there. We have a very well-established music programs in all of our schools. Students start playing instruments in the fourth grade and can be in chorus as well. Due to scheduling limitations and I'm in my second year, there have been some schedules that have limited chorus to being fourth and fifth grade students in one class. My goal is to eventually have a fourth and a fifth grade chorus at all classes, at all schools, excuse me. Our high school performance groups, I'm pretty sure many of you are aware of, they're an award-winning group. All of our groups have won awards throughout the state this past weekend. Our chorus under director Mr. Matt Cunningham performed in Worcester at the Massachusetts Instrumental and the Micah Choral Festival where they received a gold medal award. The jazz band performed and received a silver medal. Our concert band received a silver medal. Jazz band won a gold medal. And so there is a rich history in performance groups here in the city. We just hosted the Southeast Massachusetts Music Educators Association Conference here at the high school just this past weekend. There were around over 400 students, 80 directors for two days, which culminated in a concert, two concerts on Saturday. And every facility in this wing was used and we hosted a lot of students, we fed them. It was an amazing time. We have a talented workforce of 31 teachers and have proposed to bring on more to eliminate the need for teachers to travel so much. Several of our teachers traveled to and from different schools in a specific day, but one of the goals that I'm looking to do is getting more teachers based at home schools to broaden the offerings at those schools. Private lessons are offered to our students through our enrichment program. That used to be a cost of $20 per lesson, lessons were 30 minutes. Through Superintendent Thomas, next year, all lessons will be free, which is huge in the world of private lessons. And this is part of my recruitment and retention program so that we will stop losing students to other schools, that if we're saying that you could, you know, go to another school and pay for lessons or stay here and get your private instruction free from your music teacher. And that's being handled through community schools. And next year when that's offered, we will surely be inundated with students. And that is some of the infrastructure groundwork that I want to build at the lower grades. So if students are taking private lessons at fourth and fifth grade, they'll continue with their teacher and they'll continue lessons till they get to the high school and our program will become even stronger and bigger than it currently is. We have partnerships with area colleges and universities. I was just speaking to the director of education at Bridgewater State and she's already sent several student teachers our way. But next year she'll offer private teachers that will still teach alongside of our music teachers in that private lesson program run through community schools. We're going to be broadening our electives offering to our students next year. Currently we run a music history class, two music history classes and theory courses. Next year we will run history of popular music, history of Western European music, music in media, which is studying music in television and movies. And that will be in conjunction with, in the instrumental department, we'll be running an elective jazz improv for students that not just play instruments, but students that are interested in jazz and interested, interested in improvisation will be able to take that class as well. We'll eventually be adding recording and engineering because we're missing a large swath of students that all of our, all of our classes currently are performance-based. We offer piano one and two, rep chorus, concert choir, advanced concert band, and concert band. My goal is to start making our program more inclusive, to offering options to more of the students to just walk by our classes, classes and not every class be an audition-based course. So if a student wants to take a class for general interest, like history of Western music, or Mr. Cunningham, we were talking about creating a general chorus that's non-audition for the students that just wanted for the love of singing, may eventually grow into wanting to audition for the rep chorus or the concert choir. Last March, we were partnered with South Shore Bank and they, they sponsored a night at the symphony where I took 53 students to the symphony on Saturday night. They provided pizza and drinks and transportation. And I want to eventually create a night series where we'll either do a night of the symphony, a night of the opera, a night at the ballet, where students from Brockton can get to go to these events in Boston in, you know, local areas. And South Shore Bank has pledged that they will help support wherever we need that. So that was the night the kids got dressed up and we went to the, went to the symphony. It was a great night, it was. One of the things I want to do is improve the number of students that graduate and go on to study music and music education. Currently, there are students that do graduate, go to music, but I want to broaden those numbers that represents the students that go through and have a Brockton music experience. It's one of the richest experiences, I think, no shade to my other colleagues here, but I think that our students, when they get such a rich experience here, that especially into education, they may possibly come back and work in our district. We have our pops concert coming up in the spring, our jazz concert coming up in the spring. And I think the students are getting such a rich experience in Brockton that it was mostly audition and exclusive based on funding and based on staffing. The district has come through with flying colors this year. We have eight new teachers on staff this year. And with pledging more, Superintendent Thomas and I are working on, once again, broadening these offerings to our students. And broadening that means bringing more staff on board. School committee has been extremely supportive of everything and being new teacher here is my second year, I'm really excited to come and just tackle some of these, you know, large problems that we're looking to face. So I am open to questions.
First of all, thank you. And second of all, congratulations because our student, school committee member gave us all the details about the Micah. Honestly, she was so excited, as were we. So congratulations on that. Nice work. It sounds like you've gotten a lot done in the past couple of years that you've been here. I love your energy, I really do. I have to be honest, I think it's great. And I believe the jazz band is speaking at the, is performing at the Rotary meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
Yes, so I, I.
It's Thursday.
Yes, I am looking forward to see them there. So I just wanted to say that I knew that they were on the docket for performing and I'm definitely looking forward to it. But congratulations and it looks like you're making some good changes.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the committee members? Any more questions from committee members?
Sure.
Um, just wondering, I know you said your goal is to broaden more um courses on music.
Yes.
Um, and I just think of a wonder part of that broaden. When I think of um improv jazz, um, I, like, the number one place I think about jazz is New Orleans. So I wonder, are some of these courses, are there like integrated field trips that they're able to see?
To New Orleans?
Like, like that, like, you know? Well, I, I'm just thinking jazz, New Orleans, or New Orleans. But um, I'm just wondering, because, right, music is so different across even the statewide.
Yes.
If those opportunities are even offered so students can see music in different perspectives? Or is that like, or could that be like a goal that we go towards? Cause when you think of broaden, I don't know, I thought about.
No, that's, that's a great um question. Uh, Kevin Cardell, who's running the jazz improv class, went to his, I think he's received one of his degrees in New Orleans. And so one of the things, you mentioned jazz, that's his forte.
Oh, nice.
And so a lot of the courses that he's looking to start um will start at that grassroots level and then spread out. Um, Mr. um Cunningham is, as you know, this, what he does with chorus is just phenomenal. And me being a choral and piano person myself, next year we're looking to do gospel choir. That's something that I will then offer to the students because there's a component of being from the south and bringing that part of my culture and heritage to our students that share that, as well as others that want to experience it. That's why I'm wanting to say that the staffing, we wanna make sure we do it strategically to where each and every person that gets, comes through our Brockton music department has such experience. I'm, I'm listening to um, uh, Ms. Richard talk about the courses she offers. And first time I saw their thirty-one art courses, you know, my heart just started beating faster because I'm thinking, I want the music department to have that same compliment and give our students those same opportunities. And I welcome the challenge of being creative enough with the staff to what can we offer our kids, AP music theory, IB music courses, um, history of jazz, history of gospel, history of rock and roll, and not just performance. But that was my interest in getting the um, recording and engineering component. Because we have students that may not want be, want to be behind a microphone or on stage playing, but may, maybe behind the stage, you know, making beats and making recordings um, in that area where it's not traditional music. But the way social media and the way the generations are coming through our school. This isn't the same Brockton high school it was ten, twenty years ago, not even five years ago. And music technology is passing our kids by. So I want our kids that may not want to be on stage, but can still bring that component to for, to music performance.
Yeah. So I just think um, when you talk about the recording and engineering, that's part of like DJing, making beats, things like that. Okay. And then just like another thing, I think this is such a great thing just because my husband's K-Verdian and I've heard that the K-Verd um country, don't quote me on this, but I think like ninety percent of them are musicals in some way. And just looking at like my fam, like, I'm not musical at all. I have no beat. I can't dance.
Okay.
Or I, at least self-consciously, I think that. But when I look at them and like their arts of music, I think this is like amazing to even bring that in, which you mentioned, you wanna bring more of your choir, your heritage, like the Sutherland. And I think that history, maybe a history class of maybe their own country and how important music is, I think would be like amazing as well, that collaboration with the history department.
Right. And I think, and that's what I've told the music staff is, we have, every day, we have in our student, in our classrooms, you know, such a wealth of experience and cultures and diversity that we're not taking advantage of that. So one of the things I've told the, the staff is, next year, reach out to your families, reach out to one family.
Yeah.
You know, ask them, what are some of the music they use in celebrations or ceremonies? And, you know, take one song, bring it in. And, you know, if one day, you know, Lisa brings in a song that she sings around their dinner table, around the holidays, let that be a song that you can bring into your class and just enrich the entire class. And I told, that'll give kids that, I'm the star today because we're using a song that we sing in my family. Um, and once again, I have had the experience of teaching in, I've been an elementary school principal in Brookline and in different areas where culture and diversity is celebrated. And in Brockton, we have it here in front of us every day. And I think through music, we can just tap into that. And I think once we get that tap flowing, that you saying you have such a K-Verdian heritage, it will not be a surprise when our students sing a K-Verdian song at their concert and using original K-Verdian instruments. And maybe have, you know, someone come and talk about the K-Verdian connection between that and say music, American music history. So these are all things that, once it's strategically done, um, will solidify our footprint as far as being the strongest music department in the state.
Sounds amazing. Thank you.
I hope. Thank you.
Any further questions? Mike, um, are these students making their own music? Like, they, they're conducting their own beats, their own lyrics? And are they performing it? Are they recording it? Like, where, where do they start with that?
We're not there yet. And I, that was the impetus for my wanting to do a recording and engineering section. Um, I'm working with, and I started working with Cindy Burns at Huntington, at the Keith Center last year. I DJ on weekends. And so one of the things that I wanted to do to help pull in the kids at the Swilster State, the um Keith Center, was she found a grant, she found technology, computers, that I was gonna connect her to a DJ software program where I would go over and teach that. So the kids would have a structured and struck, structured time to say, learn how to DJ. And then whenever, once they've seen how beats match, you can easily talk about the connection between, you know, Beethoven, Brahms, Biggie and the Beatles through music. And if you're using something simple as a beat and they're matching with songs, that then they can see how those beats intertwine. So currently, there's not an area for that recording engineering. But funding for that is desperately needed, if that's gonna be my doorway to talk about that. Um, because that's the type of things that has to be continually updated because technology is always evolving. So I have, I have a space in mind here at the high school that we could use for, you know, a recording studio space. Um, the biggest um support of that would be um financial support. Because the way technology evolves, it's the kind of thing that um would always have to be. Our kids would want it to be on the cutting edge of whatever else is happening. So in addition to turf fields, I want our kids to have the latest engineering and recording software.
How does that tie into our, you know, with our alternative schools as well? I know you mentioned the Keith Center. Um, overall, like, with the music, how does that, and tie in with participation? And where's that with the alternatives?
It would connect because whatever students are getting at VHS, they would get to the alternative schools. Um, and staffing might be that concern to where, once we get staffing, then it's my job to then work out scheduling. So that there's no separation between students at the alternative school and students at the high school. So if students at the alternative school will get the same music experience, they will have, if it's a recording studio or a DJ studio within their school, same way we'd have one here.
I know that, you know, with the football, we have the band out there.
Sorry, say again?
With the football program, with the games, you know, you have the marching band, you have the
Right.
Everybody out there. Um, I mean, I've seen a little bit of that during this, the basketball season, they had a small
They have a pet band.
Yeah, they had that. So it was, it was nice to see them um perform in there. Ask the same question. What struggles or issues do you have? I know it's your second year. Funding, instruments?
Yeah, funding and instruments. Um, we have two vendors. Um, KNC Music and Music and Arts. They're tremendous supporters. Um, they even give a complement of instruments each year for, they're called scholarship instruments for students that can't afford them. They adequately supply that. Um, some of the larger ticket items that I see that we're needing. Um, I'm upgrading the general music classroom supplies in all the elementary schools. Some of them are playing bells that are missing um pallet, um, that are missing actual, the actual bells. Mallets, they're playing, some are playing with pencils. Uh, it's in sad shape. So what I've been given from Superintendent Thomas is find the needs and he's come through, you know, with flying colors, upgrading our um materials in our classrooms. Another issue would be our condition of our pianos. Pianos are very static and fixed instruments and they're expensive to maintain. One of the things that I would love to do is get digital pianos in our schools. Digital pianos, electronic, they don't go out of tune and the technology is pretty stable. Pianos require repair, tuning, maintenance. A kid comes up and puts a hamburger in the piano, which is what we found in one piano. Um, and that, you know, hamburger stays there for years and then all of the things that come along with that. The digital pianos, they're smaller, they're portable and they're easier to manage. So that's something that I'm looking to work down the road. Um, in the band room at the high school, the storage areas, for those of you that have been in there, been in there since nineteen seventy-one. And they're outdated. Um, some of them don't close. We're stacking in instrument cases on top of the instrument of the lockers, which to me is a safety issue. So one is the band teacher, Mr. Cardell, Mr. Van Tootie and I were just talking how we can look to find, upgrade our storage in the band room. Um, upgrade our um concert band, advanced concert band jackets. Uh, these are things that last ten, fifteen, twenty years, but we're coming around that time where they need to be just redone. Polyester lasts forever, but um it's still polyester. Um, and as far as uh, other tha, other than that, the uh, infrastructure of the middle schools, elementary schools and high schools, the small classroom items, those are my big first items. Those are things that manipulatives that kids use every day. And if I go over to Angelo and they pull out their bells and, you know, three of them are missing the actual, like, C note and, you know, some of them aren't playing their mallets, we can't expect the best out of our kids if we don't give them the best. So one thing I make sure is that, I tell teachers, tell me what you want, we'll find a way to make it happen.
Now, participation, is there a recruitment um mechanism to get kids to get more involved? Or is it just, you know, we have the door open. If you wanna walk in, you walk in?
A little of both. We um encourage students at the elementary levels. They have general music every day within their classes. Um, when they get into the performance areas, either performance, chorus or band, uh, those uh doors are open as well. So by the time they get to middle school, you know, students have had an experience of general music, general chorus, or at least they've got a chance to try instruments. One of the things that I would like to try this year, next year, excuse me, is students get to play an instrument and select an instrument in fourth grade. What I've told the band teachers is, and I've asked my vendors, if you can give us a collection of used instruments that you don't mind if students drop or break, let my second and third graders get to hold a trumpet, hold a trombone at that young age, even though they're not playing it. But you don't know what student in second grade gets to touch a trombone and feel that slide and go, this is an interesting, interesting instrument. And then by the time they're in fourth grade, they know what they want. So they both come through and said they'll do that. So recruiting um at that level, that's one of the things I wanna do is get instruments in children's hands at a younger age. Um, for recruitment at the younger lev, levels as well, COVID kinda slowed us down a little, but eventually our high school groups will do tours, mini tours of the middle schools. So they'll go down, play for an assembly, talk to the students, find out, you know, questions, what they have. Oh, one thing that we did do this year, the band used to, was called a petting zoo, where the high school teachers would go to the middle school and perform, I'm gonna say the elementary schools, and perform and let the kids see them play. This year, we actually had the high school students go. And there's a connection between students at the high school and students at elementary school and they see their peers playing the instruments. It jumped, it just like pushed our membership higher than we thought. So now we have something that's gonna work. Um, so the recruitment, in addition to the private lessons being free, I think our recruitment and retention program would be pretty solid.
Thank you. Any further questions, Ms. Mendez?
Um, you said that was called the petting zoo, that when the high school students went to go?
Yes, it's like a petting zoo where the kids get to see them play the instruments as ensembles. They learn music, they learn a couple of songs, you know, fun songs that the kids know, and they do it on band instruments.
So I guess my question applies to this, but I'm thinking of alums. You mentioned, you know, you wanna encourage alums to go into music and education to come back. But then how about the alums that are already involved with music, not necessarily educational, but maybe in the recording and engineering or making beats, being successful with that? Is there like a way to network with bringing alums back and having, you know, students connect with them?
Yes, that's, that's something I want to do down the road and I'd love for students that, and I've asked some of the students that know alum who are doing that. I'm not ready yet for them to recruit because we don't have the infrastructure in place for students to say, I'm interested in it. And they say, oh, I wanna do that and come to the high school and we don't have anything in place.
Okay.
So once we have those things in place, then we can put out the word, you know, Brockton has a recording and engineering division or our music department. Here's a student who is making beats in Los Angeles now, can come back and actually instruct the kids on the software that we would have in place.
Okay.
Any further questions? What's the uh, um, the cost with that, with the recording and engineering? How big of a space do you need? I mean?
I think initially I'm looking to maybe have two, maybe three computer stations because I want it to be a select manageable class. But that will eventually expand to where, you know, we're getting a ten, fifteen stations. Um, and you have to look, the upfront cost would be buying the computers, the computer software, the space, but then you have to outfit the room because it couldn't just be a regular classroom. It has to be, you know, outfitted with soundproofed um, and other apparatus within the room to make it functional. Power would have to be, the high-speed internet would have to be, you know, completely accessible. So there are things that you'd have to put in place beforehand. Um, I'm not really ready to give a budget number yet, but those are just the infrastructure things you'd want in place first before you told students to come in. So I wanted to start small with three to five stations to eventually grow and expand.
We've been talking about social media with the presence. So like, what are you doing far as um, social media? Is it you with chess or is it something that you handle yourself, you know?
Handle myself.
That's a, that's a big thing with us right now. It's uh, you know, marketing everything that's available here at the high school and the district.
Um, currently, I handle that myself. The Brockton Music Department has an Instagram page and the Instagram handle is uh, I have it right here. BrocktonMusic20. We have two hundred and seventy-six followers, but we're growing. Um, so if you wanna take a look at our Instagram page, and that features vocal and instrumental music. BrocktonMusic20. And it's the number twenty, two zero.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Mrs. Smith. I know, um, again, welcome to, to the district.
Thank you.
You know, I love the changes that you're, you're gonna implement and uh, you just have to tackle that and make sure you get all the tools necessary to get to that.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Any other business? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second?
Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Mendez and properly second by Mrs. Ellis. I hereby